Good evening. We call to order the work session on 5/21/2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. All board members are in attendance. Next, recognition and guests of scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have the 2024-25 fiscal year budget final presentation with Mr. Bricker. Please know that this budget is in paper form at your table. We will be presenting it up on the screen, and then we will be posting this live on the district website following this evening's presentation. This budget represents all the resources needed to operate and provide a sound education for the students during the 24-25 school year. Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening. So on the first page, we have the timeline, and we are heading towards the May 28 date where we set to adopt the final budget for the 24-25 fiscal year. We've already gone through the different items up ahead or above that, adopting the preliminary and adopting the proposed final budget. The next set of slides, and I won't spend too much time on them, but they're the reason that we do what we do and why we are looking for the resources and funds for the school. We get a general data giving an idea of what our population is in the community that we support. We then go to the technology that is provided to the students that attend Methacton as well as the staff. The next slide gives you an enrollment. So as of October 1st, 2023, which is the time that you report to PDE, we had 4,604 students. We're currently above that on our last one as of May 1st. You'll see that it has the ethnic breakdown, and then it also gives you information on the special ed area as well as the gifted area, homeschool students, and charter schools. Next slide is a brief overview of the elementary and upper elementary. The right thing for the elementary school is to develop a guidance curriculum that is taught by counselors at all grades. The elementary schools are equipped with smart boards, Chromebooks, and integrated approach, and we are one-to-one. Upper Skyview, the students are grouped into five teams with three teachers to each team. Each team has a dedicated flex time throughout the day, throughout the six-day cycle to afford them the opportunities to extend and support. Skyview students also have a variety of co-curricular programs, including band, orchestra, chorus, extracurricular programs, including after-school sports and student council. The next slide, we have Arcola Intermediate School. We're at tonight. The access to health, physical education, expressive arts, music, wellness, technology, and all students have a class in one of three world languages as part of their schedule. There's also 13 extracurricular athletic opportunities as well as access to 12 district-sponsored clubs. We also include on this slide the Methacton High School, which has a vocational technical training available through the North Monaco Technical Career Center, which is included in our budget. Full range of school counseling services to students and parents, advanced placement programs with 24 courses offered, college-level enrollment, and we also have access to 18 extracurricular athletic opportunities and access to 31 district-sponsored clubs. Another highlight on the high school is the performance data showing the scores of the proficient on advanced and the Keystone exams for 22-23, 39.5% for Algebra I, 75.2 for Literature, and 73% for Biology. You'll also see their SAT scores are significantly above the state and the national average as well as our ACT scores. Our graduation rate is 95.71%, and 89% plan to continue their formal education. Next slide brings back to when we were in December, when we met for the first time to discuss the ACT One Index, what it means and where it is taking us as we made the decision whether or not to exceed the ACT One Index and take the special education exception that was presented to Methacton via qualifying on the expenses that we incur. We did not take the, we did not qualify for Peasers, and we did not take the special education exception. Had we taken that, that would have allowed our ACT One limit to go up to 6.53 versus 5.3%. The next slide shows where the ACT One Index is in relationship to, excuse me, in relationship to the millage rate 10% higher in 23-24. It kind of gives you a track as to where you'll see the ACT One Index and how Methacton has been consistently below with the exception of one year, which had exceeded the ACT One Index, and that was predominantly due to the prior year being a 0% tax increase. Then next slide, we have the ACT One Index versus the inflation rate. You can see how Methacton compares to that and also the cumulative. And then thing to note on the cumulative, you'll see that the ACT One is for Methacton School District. The millage rate is below the ACT One Index on a cumulative as well as the inflation rate that is going up there, which is the gray line. There's a couple items that are influenced our budget this year. First is the increase to staff pay. In the 22-23 fiscal year, there was excess funds that were awarded through the state through the basic education subsidy to address the district's ability to attract staff. We chose to use that pay to increase staff pay specifically with the professionals or the teachers as well as the support groups. This allowed us to help curb some of the staffing issues that we had and fully staff our areas when necessary. We also had increasing special education costs. As mentioned previously, we qualified for the exception to the special education cost, which would have allowed us to go to 6.53%. We are now trying to address this in this budget without exceeding the ACT One Index due to the vote that the board had. Also, we have transportation costs. In March 2023, the district extended the contract with first student at a below-market rate. However, the contract did include an 8% increase for the current year and the 24-25 year, and after that, the rate increases will be 4.25%. Again, this was done to help attract qualified CDL drivers as well as van drivers to support the transportation needs of the students within the district as well as the students traveling outside to non-public parochial and private schools. Finally, the economy. As everyone knows, interest rates are high and generating strong interest income for the revenues, which is great. We also have a strong earned income tax revenue that has grown the income for the district in that area, but it's also had an impact on goods and services, which are also increasing in cost. One next slide, you'll get to see the summary of how we transition from the preliminary budget to the proposed final budget to the final budget. In the end, the millage rate that is going to be required for the final budget is 4.7498%, which will result in 34.2 mills. Our budget will be $34.1 million, both in revenue and expenditures. The local revenue taps out at $105.2 million, state revenue $28.5 million, and the federal revenue just below $425,000. We are a service industry. The salary is being supported, the number one expense that we have, it's $54.9 million. Benefits are also associated with that are 34, about $35 million. Buildings and departments total an additional $31.5 million, and debt service and transfers total $12.8 million. The next chart shows you where we stand within regards to the district. So a couple of schools have already made their final ones. We're sitting at about, when you round it off, 4.75%. We have some proposed final budgets of 5.2. We have some that are proposing to go above the ACT One Index. We're at the ACT One Index. Right now, where it stands on the numbers, should all these come in the way they are, we will be in the middle of the pack this year. However, over the last 10 years, we've been the 11th lowest, and they're the 10th lowest over the last five years. So we are trending below the increases that other districts are experiencing. Some of these districts will eventually come in with their final numbers, which will update and maintain as we get through the year, but some of these people do not vote until near the end of June. Next slide shows the revenue summary. It gives you a breakdown of the revenue and where we're getting it from. So current real estate taxes is 66%. That is the bulk of our revenue and where we get it from. We also then have the EIT, which I mentioned before, which is strong to the economy. We get a reimbursement for Peasers and Social Security. The Peasers accounts for 7%. Basic Education subsidy sits about 6%. The property tax relief subsidy through gambling revenues increased dramatically this year, which was great with regards to helping our budget and lowering our millage increase. So that jumped from about $2.5 million up to $3 million. So that was a significant increase for the district and very helpful. On the next side, you can see a history of where the budget trends are with regards to revenue. Other revenue, we typically do not have a lot of other revenue. Some of that would be due to insurance or other claims that we may have, or as in the 21-22, we had other revenue associated with tax settlement. Federal revenue is relatively small. We get a lot of that. Most of that comes in through grants. State revenue is growing, but not growing significantly over the years, which leaves the local revenue to take on the largest burden of the school district's taxes. When you look at the local revenue for this year, as I said before, real estate taxes total $88 million. They're the number one source of our income and are 65.6% of the income generated from local revenue. The ACT One, I'm sorry, the EIT or the earned income tax is $9.5 million. That's on the high end of what Berchheimer is projecting for next year. The reason we took the high end is the economy's been strong. We actually exceeded the Berchheimer projection last year, and we're being we're being a little bit bullish on the fact that it will stay that way as we progress through most of the year and that the income continues to grow with regards to people living within the district. Interest on investments, so that's at 1.8, 1.9 million. So the concern there with that would be the fact that if interest rates drop as we get closer to help stave off that, we recently just entered into 10 different CDs that will be locked in between a 5 to 4.5% rate and should help offset some of the concerns with regards to interest rates should they drop. Next one be the real estate transfer tax. And looking at some information I was doing for a report, our real estate transfers with the growth of the communities that are coming up, there should be some good growth still remaining in there. So we budgeted $1.63 million. And delinquent real estate taxes have been strong recoveries through Montgomery County, and they total $1.1 million. Now, every other revenue source that we have in local totals $3.1 million or 2.3% of the local revenue that we generate. On the next slide, you can see how we calculate the real estate increase. Our taxable assessed values are $2.7 billion. The millage increase is factored in, which gives us the 34.2. That gives us a gross tax levy. We did not take any exceptions, so there is the adjusted millage will stay at 34.2. We did get the gambling. As I mentioned, we jumped from the $2.5 million that you see in a 23-24 year to the $3 million. Again, that's a significant increase and very helpful to the district with regards to that. That gave us a net tax levy of $90.8 million. We then apply our collection rate, which has been pretty accurate for how we get in the funds associated with local revenue from real estate taxes. We take a three-year average, and that three-year average for this year that we'll be using is from 21, 22, and 23, which gives a 96.93%, meaning that we expect to collect 96.93% of the net tax levy for our gross tax levy that will put into our budget of $88 million. On the next slide, it shows where the property tax is. One thing I did notice is we got an updated common level ratio, and I put that into our thing here. The average assessed value in Methacton is $176,620, which translates into just less than a half a million dollars on the average home value within Methacton School District. The net impact to the homeowner that has an average home is $273.90, giving them a tax of $6,040.40 at a 34.2 millage. You can look up your home values on Montgomery County property records, and you can see what your assessed value is associated with that and come up with the taxes yourself. Next slide we move into is expenditures. As I said before, we are a service industry. We are driven by our staff, and our staff is the ones that teach the students that we're here for. That means that our salaries will be the driving force as well as the benefits associated with them. Our benefits and salaries total about 67% of our budget. Buildings about .6, departments 22.9, and debt and service transfers are at 9.5%. One of the things that we do each year as we go through the budget is we work on the staffing that we have to give the students. Throughout this year, one of the things we did is we did add in this fiscal year the digital media specialist support. We also removed the accounting specialist support, driver's ed paraprofessional, instructional aid support, and four PCAs also in support. None of these positions are currently filled, so there are no human impact to those. We added two math specialists, professional level. We removed the coordinator of technology position, and we added the assistant director of technology and system administrator. On the next side, you'll see the historical budget trends. Again, the big one at the bottom is where we are seeing. You'll see that in 2021, our salaries were about $45.6 million. We're now at $40, $54.9 million. And I'll go back two slides just to give you an example. We do have additional staff that is supporting our district, so it is increasing. So it's not just a straight increase just in pay for the people that are here. There's also been additional staff added to help support the state teachers as well as the students. The top 10 expenditures, we have professional education salaries. That is the teacher salaries. Peasers, which is $18.5 million, but that will come back at half of that will come back to the district via a subsidy from the state. Our medical insurance for next year is expected to total $9.3 million. That is the district's portion. That is not the district and the members, but that's just the district's portion. As I mentioned before, our contracted carriers increased. They're at $7.5 million. Our bond principal payments are $7.2 million. Administration salaries about $5 million. Professional education services, other, there are outside contractors and consultants. They total about $4.7 million. Social Security, just as Peasers, 50% of that will come back. Our total expenditures are 4.2, but we will get about $2.1 million back from the state. Other professional services at 3.6, and the interest on our bonds at $3.3 million. All other revenue, all other expenditures are $32 million. One of the things we like to do also is to look at the major objects. This kind of breaks it down between salaries, benefits, and the other different areas. The key areas again are the salaries and benefits. The other one would be the other professional services and the professional services that we get. So a lot of the professional services are increasing. There are areas that we're doing for our pupil services. As you can see, those expenditures are growing over year over year. In 22-23, we had $11.7 million. This year, we only have budgeted $8.6 million, so that shortfall will have to be made up by by savings in other areas or additional revenue that comes in. We are adjusting for that in the 24-25 budget to $11.6 million. The other purchase services, the increase is directly related to the transportation costs associated with that. And then in the debt payments, you'll see we're relatively flat on the debt payments that are coming in with regards to principal. We're not really adding a lot of additional principal, but there is some debt payments and fees associated with the new borrowing that we are projecting in a 24 fiscal year, sorry, 24 calendar year, which would be before the end of this calendar year. You're only allowed to buy $10 million for bank-qualified each year, so we will be looking to do that before the end of the calendar year and then looking to see what other debt we need as we move forward in the 25 calendar year. Next slide kind of shows the changes that we go from month to month as we do the process. In the most recent one that we did, moving from the proposed final budget to the final budget, real estate taxes dropped by about $577,000. Interest income dropped by $30,000. Social Security down to about $2,200, and retirement down by a little less than $10,000. Again, a lot of this would definitely due to the fact that a property tax relief also came in at $472,000 above where we were last year. Again, gives us a full final budget of $134.1 million. When you look at the expenditures, the change from the proposed final budget to the final budget, salaries increased slightly by about, sorry, my eyes aren't that good, $57,000, and the benefits by about $16,000. Retirement about $24,000, and then insurance, which is the insurance that we do for our general insurance, not medical or prescription or I, is the general liability insurance for the district. That actually came in. Some of that didn't decrease was due to our cyber, so that really paid off well for us. We did increase tuition, so the coaching program of $100,000. We did remove the budgetary reserve of $200,000. The supplies we added for $72,000 are directly related to technology, and then we had some repair changes that went down to about $300, and our professional service went down about $13,000. Again, presenting a balanced budget, $134.1 million of expenditures for next year. So how do we get from where we were this year budget to where we are currently? So what we did is we kind of broke this down to the main areas that are impacting the change from budget to budget. So local taxes increased, obviously, as I said before. The assessment was $2.74 billion and increased by $16.4 million. The millage increased by 4.7498%. And the collection rate is 96.3. That gave us an increase of $4.1, $4.2 million. Our basic education subsidy is based on the current year allocation from the state. That increased by about $732,000. Earned income tax, EIT, from Berchheimer, we did, again, we took the high end. That increased by about $650,000. Already spoke about the property tax release and subsidy that we got from the state. Peasers and Social Security, those two are directly related to the staffing. Peasers, while it dropped to 33.9%, also is related to the increases in salaries, so that's why it's going up even though that the Peasers rate dropped. Interest income, we base that on our current balances, our current rates, and our expectations on where we'll be next year with the balances, so that also increased. And our in-home real estate taxes are on trend based on homes that are coming online. Again, I mentioned that the information that was provided to me from the district, from the townships shows some large groups that could be coming on, which would generate additional real estate taxes for the district. And real estate transfer taxes, the trend still seems to be strong where the real estate transfers are occurring regularly. And then finally, we have a transportation subsidy, which is based on the actual subsidy information from the state. That totals about $7.1 million or 98%, 98.3% of the changes from budget to budget. Every other line item in the budget accounts for 1.7% or $130,000 of the change in budget. When we look at the expenditures, also increasing. Salaries increased by $2 million. Benefits are increasing. You have the medical and prescription that increased by roughly 12% combined, which is about a million-dollar increase. Peasers increased by $650,000. As I said, the site dropping by 0.1% to 33.9. Again, it's related to what our salaries are times the 33.9%. Special education costs have been increasing, which is evident by Methacton School District qualifying for the special education exception to the ACT One Index. This increase aligns the budget to the actual cost incurred. Substitute increases are included in the contractual staff days allotted for professional staff and nurses and three long-term subs, LTS, required for coaching. Transportation costs I went over previously is based on the contract. Maintenance costs, we did increase some of the maintenance costs. We do have some increasing in the utilities that we're experiencing. We previously approved the disposal contract with waste management, and that increased. And we also have some HVAC repairs that we put into the maintenance budget so we can stay on top of the needs of the district with regards to that area. Legal is increasing. The costs are associated with general counsel, right-to-know, and special education. We've renovated this a couple of times with regards into the Finance Committee. We have the charter schools. We've been pretty steady at 78 and 23 with regards to regular ed and special ed. There has been some increase in special ed students, but we're hoping some of the students do either A, return or graduate in that year, so we'll see how that pans out. But we've been pretty strong on that for the last two years. We're going to stay there for this year. And then, as I mentioned, we included a bond increase of $10 million, and the amount is net of the reduction that would have occurred, so it kind of keeps us relatively just a little flat, but it is in there. Again, the expenditures that I outlined here are 99.9% of the increases in the budget. That leaves point one. Sorry, I couldn't get those other line items for you, but from a high level, those items are the ones that are driving the increase with regards to it, and they're all definitely either a contractual or a need of the district to help support the students. The next one is the timelines where we are. We'll skip past the admin projects. The next one is the timeline and key variables. So we've already gone through everything. We are done through May, and we have completed everything with regards to that. And then in the appendix, you have everything that we've been through as we went through the budget process and the dates. And with that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Are there any questions from members of the board to my right? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bricker. There's a couple of things that you said that I think just need a little clarification if somebody's looking at this for the first time. So on page eight, you update the performance data related to the algebra. If Mr. Regina could explain the 35.9 aspect of that because it changed significantly. explain the 35.9 aspect of that because it changed significantly and there's a mathematical reason why that happened?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Winters. So the algebra scores of 35.9 have to do with the banking mechanism of the keystones and the students that typically take it at the eighth grade level were not part of the calculation based on the pandemic that took place. So you saw a dip in a number of scores, specifically algebra for 35.9, and we're going to see that remedy itself naturally next year a little bit because Watson's seventh graders that are in that data. And then the year after that, that entire data set will be accurate without pandemic data. Thank you.
Thank you. And then also for just another level of clarification, you said long-term subs required for coaching. Maybe Dr. Regina, you could also explain that?
Certainly. The one LTS will be for the TOA, for the instructional coach. The other two LTSs are for the literacy coaches that exist this year and will be moving into next year's budget as well. Thank you.
The individual subs will not be the coaches, though. They're backfilling.
That's correct. All three coaches are full-time teachers here and they'll be backfilled with LTSs. Thank you, Mr. Winters.
Yep. And then another clarification, you did talk about the charter schools with 101 budgeted students, which is equivalent to where we are today with 78 being regular ed. The regular ed rate, I believe, is somewhere around 17,000. It's set by the state. And then the special ed rate is in the 40s. I don't know exactly what the 40 whatever.
It's about 40. We are trying, we don't get the rate until after our budget's done, after the new year. So we'll get that from them, but it's, we typically expect around 17 and say 41, 17,000, regular ed 41,000, special ed.
Yeah, I just want to make the point that we're talking about the special ed qualifying for the special ed. And one of the biggest, the largest increase in this budget is the realignment to the special ed costs that we've experienced over the last years. So it, what the state has identified is that our rate is 40 some thousand. So that is where a lot of these corrections are in this budget is around the special education and also to understand that that two or three million that goes to charter schools is revenue, local revenue and going directly to the charter schools for those 101 students. So of the 134 million, approximately two and a half, $3 million is going elsewhere. I do also want to just a comment related to the process. And I'm sure I'll make the same comment next week. The process is asking the administration in the district to look at what is needed to provide the educational services to make the fact in a great district. It also has the responsibility to make sure that, that what they bring forward is going to provide a payback for the district and not just the wants, but also primarily the needs and then making sure that we can understand if we can afford it or not. This is the largest tax increase I will be voting for, for my ninth, ninth year of voting. As you can see, compared to other districts, it's right in line related to inflation. And then when you deep dive into the numbers, it's primarily around people. It's the ability to hire teachers, its ability to hire staff, its ability to get bus drivers, its ability in the marketplace to be competitive with the rates to provide the services we have. So, you know, a decision that I made related to signing different contracts with transportation, signing different contracts with the MEA, I didn't sign them, but you know, being involved in supporting them, I stand by. And yes, it's a higher rate, but otherwise, talk about the cliff, the cliff in developing Mathacton into a great district would happen if we're not making those decisions. So I stand by that. I appreciate the administration and their work they've done.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Any questions for members to my right? Ms. Cleary?
Mr. Bricker, I just have a couple of questions for clarity for myself. Page 26, we talk, you talk about insurance. Is that the, is that the program that's through all the policies that are through Willis Tower?
That's correct.
Okay. So my question is around your numbers of, sounds like here it's going to cost 8,000. I can't read the, I don't have my glasses on.
That's a reduction in our budget from where we had last prior. So that when we start the process with Willis Towers, Watson, what we do is we get a budget from them
Yeah.
and where we expect to stand. And that comes in November. And it's a long way. They'll have run rates, they'll have loss rates, they'll have anything that we've gone through. So what we do is we take that as we go through and we're working it. You can see going into the proposed final budget, we had a 20,000 increase because they were doing valuation adjustments and they wanted to keep us aware of what's going on. So a lot of the valuations of our assets, our buildings and vehicles and our stuff came in. So we had that factored in. So we went from, I think we're roughly around 312,000 in total at the end of the day. What they did is then they got the final one. So when you look at the final budget, you'll see that we had the final policy number actually from that last budget that was given for the proposed final decreased by 8,200. And a lot of that was due to our cyber going down.
Okay. So essentially it's going, our premiums are going up about 12 grand. Is that?
It'll be on the board agenda and I can't remember what the number is.
The number in the finance committee, well, my math could be bad too, but was like 21,000. And then when I saw the eight, I thought, oh, so maybe it's more like 13,000.
No, it's 21,000 overall from the prior year. The 8,000 is just a reduction from where we stood on the proposed final.
Oh, when we started. Okay. All right, fine. So then my next question is, do we have a practice of going out to market with our insurance every couple of years? Or I guess the first question is, did we go out to market this year?
We did not go out to market this year. We did try and go out to market last year and the year before that. When most people find out we're with Willis Tower Watson, they would choose not to bid against them because they are the lowest in the area with regards to school. They specifically focus in on schools.
Okay. Do we have a practice to, to try again? Like, is there a, do we do it every year? Or do we have a practice of doing it every two years, three years? Like what, how do we, how do we normally do that?
So typically every two to three years, we go out and we try it. So next year would be the normal year to go out and try again.
Okay.
I, I'll be honest, we've, last time we went out to seven different vendors and only two others gave quotes and they were about 70 to 100,000 higher.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that we have a practice of doing that. And then my other question is around the legal fees that we budgeted for. So it looks like my read from the finance committee meeting notes is that all of our, whether it's general legal or it's right to know or special ed, all went up. So did we factor, did we budget for the coming year against what we spent this year?
Yes. And there's two factors. One being obviously the use, we've been seeing an increase in the special education, the right to know and the general council areas, as well as there was increasing rates for next year that were provided by some of the vendors that we deal with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cleary. Any other questions to my right? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, thanks to my, I really appreciate the thorough detailed analysis of this. My question is, if you go to slide 28, the professional education service I use is indicating there's an increase of 610,000 this year. On the agenda tonight, we're looking at approving the Montgomery County IU cost with an increase of 174. So I was just wondering if you could explain what additional things are in that 600,000 number?
Sure. So some of the IU costs that we have would be pre-K, the early intervention cost. We do also have the service, service plan with the IU as well as our work studies are handled by the IU. So some of those costs are increasing and they're being picked up. Some of it is also correcting the budget from the prior year. So it's not 100% a straight 600,000 increase. Some of it is just correcting the budget from the prior year.
You mean because in the prior year budget, we didn't account for all those costs or the costs were increased last year and we didn't have it in the budget last year? I'm not sure exactly what you mean by correction.
So people services is a unique budget. Unlike, like transportation, like I know how many routes we want to run. I know what the cost is per route. I know what roughly our gas is going to cost. And that people services, I can have it 100% right. And then on July 1st, someone could move in or out that require services. And some of these services can cost 150,000. So it really depends on what the needs are. So previously, we didn't expect that much to come in in last year's budget, but more did. So we're correcting that budget now that we have the new people that came in and adjusting for that.
So you're essentially setting the budget with the known information that we have now for our current student population?
That's correct.
And then sort of making the assumption that going forward, we anticipate it will be similar?
That's correct. So the plan that's on the, for a vote tonight for approval, that's the plan as of right now. If someone moves in or someone moves out, that plan will be changed.
Okay. That's super helpful. Thank you very much. The other question I had, and I don't know if you can answer this, or perhaps Dr. Regina can answer this. We're talking about long-term subs to essentially take over classrooms for coaches that we're going to use to help our students, you know, academic performance. Would it be more cost effective for us to hire permanent teachers for those positions rather than long-term subs? Or is the long-term sub solution a more cost effective approach?
Yeah, that actually becomes a labor conversation, not so much a financial one. So the moment we add permanent people to our teaching staff to become part of the bargaining unit and then require one of the 1124 acts in order to furlough staff if you choose not to go with coaches. So the moment we make the transition to adopt the coaching program, if that's what the board chooses to do the following year, we certainly can do that with permanent subs. But as we're piloting, you wouldn't want to do that just in case you had to go back, put the teachers back in the classroom and then not having to let go of staff afterwards. It's a critical point that we don't hire them. Good question.
So effectively, this approach gives us the option to decide to go back to put those, those coaches back in the classroom with no impact to teachers.
That's exactly right. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Graff. Any other comments, questions to my right? Seeing none to my left? Ms. Kent Crowe?
No, I just want to say thank you. With the substitutes, what spearheaded it is, I do agree with the rate increases that like Mr. Winters had said. I'm curious, just in late, maybe in beginning of the year, just to see how we did with the fill rates with substitutes because we changed the rates for them to start. I'd love to see like we did that about a year ago, where we were and accuracy of fills. I just, just to do a follow-up on that. But I do thank you for this. I really do like, you know, taking the time that you took tonight to go through it slowly, but then also just seeing the comparisons of where the increase of expenditures are and the increase of where with the millage and how it applied. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Kent Crowe. Ms. Deal?
I just have, first, thank you very much for this presentation. And I just have a quick question because the number is escaping me. The special education population and finances increase, I was just wondering if you had the number of the increase just compared to last year. I was just wondering how much it went up.
I did not off the top of my head.
That's fine. I'll just find that out later. And then I do just want to echo real quick what Mr. Winters said. Being aware of the increase of the budget and the increase on the taxes and the fact that 67% of our budget goes to salaries and goes to the human beings and who work in our school system and make our school system work in education. There's tons of great programs. There's tons of great curriculum, but none of that happens without the people in the buildings and the teaching of the kids by the teachers and by the educational staff. The market is becoming more and more intensely competitive. I have, in my own career, I have watched so many people leave education in the past five years alone. And it is going to continue and being a place that really is striving to keep people and bring people is important. So I just wanted to share and echo that to what Mr. Winters said. So thank you.
You're welcome. Good comment, Ms. Deal. Thank you for sharing that. Ms. Perdue?
I just have a quick question. In reference to the legal expenses with the increased cost, you indicated general legal counsel, right to know and special ed. Do you know, I guess out of the three, what's the proportion of those increases? Are they about?
I would just off the top of my head, without a calculator in front of me, I would say about 20% as general and about 4040 with regards to right to know and special education cost.
Okay. That's what I was just looking for. I was curious as far as the general counsel. And I have one on reference to slide 13. You had buildings and departments. What's included in there?
Buildings and. I'm trying to, what slide number did you say that was? I'm on slide 22, 20. So I'll go with that one. So buildings and buildings are 752, almost 753,000. So let's go over what's in a building. So in your buildings are your paper, are your pencils, your stickers and items like that. There's musical instruments, there's repairs, there's books, but not, there's more library books, there's more books that need to be replaced. Then when you get into your departments, you're looking at like curriculum, which is supplying the textbooks and all that stuff associated. So while the buildings are more really the day-to-day needs of the building and the curriculum pieces are taken care of by curriculum. Also in the departments are transportation. Why that looks so high is you also have people services, which we already went at 12. You have the business office, which is at around 12, just to keep it nice and simple. And they make up the bulk, but the business office is really made up predominantly by our bond payments. So while the business office looks really large, but 10 million of that budget is really bond payments. You have your transportation also that's included in that. And then you have a couple other smaller departments associated with that area.
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perdue. Any other questions to my left? Seeing, oh, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I just want to, Ms. Kent Crowe, we did talk about that at the finance committee that I believe in September, we agreed that this would come back with some type of analysis related to sort of how much effect, as best they can do, identify how much effect the increases in the rates had and how much volume we had. So there was a discussion about increased volume related to special education, I'm sorry, SEL and other things that we're, that we are doing for more professionals. So there is some volume effect, but also there's an increase in cost related to the rates that we changed, I think, early in the fall last year. So I believe we, if it works in the schedule, we're looking at September.
Yeah, I think we're looking either an August or September presentation by Dr. Sergeni. Are there any other questions or comments on the budget for Mr. Bricker or anybody else? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Bricker.
Thank you.
That does end the guest and scheduled speakers for this evening. Next week, we'll have a recognition of retirees, also the Spirit of Mathacton Awards and M Awards. We also have the reports and advisements. We'll hear then a public comment on board action items, the board minutes, and then we'll go into fiscal items. Mr. Bricker?
Since you guys didn't hear from me enough, we'll start with the fiscal items we have this month for the list of bills, the treasurer report, budgetary transfers. We have three motions for Arrowhead, which is to approve the purchase of eight front entrance bollards for the Arrowhead Elementary. We have the drum miller construction to install the eight front entrance bollards, as well as cancel the previous contract approved by the district so that that will come off and that'll be a credit with regards to as far as the tracking of the expenditures is. We also have to approve the MCIU budget, the MCIU unit district cost plan and the amount of 1,013,129.2 for the 2425 fiscal year. It's an increase of 174,704.94 from the prior year. We have the Keystone Advisor Agreement to approve the administration to contract with Keystone Realty Advisors to provide recommendations for assessment appeals. Current payment for them is 25% on a contingency basis, meaning that we have to get some kind of recovery. Otherwise, they don't get paid for anything that they're doing. We also have the insurance carriers and premiums for 2425. As I said before, Willis Tower Watson is our insurance provider. The premium will be 319,159 for the 2425 fiscal year. This represents an increase of 21,565 from the current year. Associated with the budget, we have the taxes for the 2425 fiscal year, which include the local service tax of $5 for Lower Providence and $10 for War Cester under the provision of the Act 511. Approve the real estate transfer tax of a half a percent for Lower Providence and War Cester Townships. Approve the earned income tax of a half a percent for Lower Providence and War Cester Township. And approve the amusement tax of 5% for Lower Providence Township and 10% for War Cester Township. And approve the amusement tax of 5% for Lower Providence Township and 10% for Warcester Township. The next item we have is the Homestead/Farmstead Exclusion Resolution of 2403. To approve the Resolution 2403 in the amount of $360.06 for homestead and farmstead exclusions for the 2425 fiscal year. That information and the resolution is attached to the agenda. And then finally, the 2425 budget. Approve the general budget for Mathacton School District for the 2425 fiscal year in the amount of $134,105,665, requiring a millage of 34.2 and an increase of property taxes of 4.7498%.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Are there any questions for Mr. Bricker from my right? Ms. Cleary?
I don't, I don't know who's best to answer this, but can somebody just give me a little education on the MCIU budgetary process? For instance, first question, A, is Dr. Zerbi or are the districts involved in creating that budget? And two, what's going in, if you know, what's going into the increase?
So not attached to this is the per-student information. Obviously, there are students that are associated with regards to the, this piece of the budget, which is a shared service plan. So this is not like where we share it with other districts. This is our students that are being supported by the MCIU. Each student has a specific need from physical therapy to occupational therapy to some other type of service that is being provided by the IU. So this is the actual cost for the student services. As I said before, student moves in, this goes up, student moves out, this goes down.
And so the increase is based on the number of students over last year? Like, what's, what's the 174,000?
The increase is based on what we had budgeted last year when they provided us this information and the students that made up that budget and the students we have now. Yes, there is an increase also in some of the services being provided.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, Ms. Cleary. Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I just wanted to extend some thanks to Mr. Kenwood. I know we have been around and around about the bollards at Arrowhead. I'm sure there are others on the board that are tired of hearing about this. But I did really appreciate the effort that's been put in. And we've gotten, you know, to a place where we can put bollards in for, you know, less than $15,000 versus the original cost of $76,000. And I think it's a win for the district, and I really appreciate his effort and diligence in sort of following that through for us. So I just want to make that comment.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Ms. Perdue?
So my question was going to be in reference to 9D, which is the ballots. And I was just looking to have a little bit more clarification, because we're now looking to cancel the, I guess, the design that was proposed by KCBA of 76,000. And then we are getting other installed by a different company for a less amount, right? Which, yes, it's a win for the district, but I'm just trying to figure out how we got here. And it's a significant price decrease, so I'm just wondering, are we getting the same? There was a lot of discussions about which ones were safe to install, and I'm just trying to figure out how we got here. So if you can explain that a little bit.
Yeah, well, ask Dr. Sergini to give us a little history lesson on this.
Thank you. We engaged in a thorough review process. We ended up with eight bollards to appropriately protect the front entrance of the building. We went through a design process where we looked at providing some designs that would be elementary school appropriate. We landed on both pencils that you can currently see at Eagleville Elementary School, as well as Lego blocks. They'll be in a staggered pattern, so there will be eight of them. We are contracting with Drumheller, which is the same contractor that originally was going to do the bollards in the front. And we were able to also install a fence and a gate along the front of Arrowhead as other additional safety devices.
If I could add, but historically, what it, what it had done, we had, we received a design from KCBA for bollards. And Dr. Sergini, I believe at the time, I'm going to make a number. There might have been 100 bollards in, in, in the design of going up and down the pavements all around. And when we, we took a step back after the, after the board approved that and considering the discussion we had the evening of the board meeting where it was approved, we made the determination that it might be best to reevaluate that and have another engineer slash architect assist us in trying to make the best long-term decision. Because it wasn't just about what we were going to do at Arrowhead. Our, our safety plan includes, you know, the considerations of bollards in a number of locations. You see them at the high school, you see them at Eagleville. You know, we need to make other considerations across the district. So when we did that, we, we undertook a different approach that I think not only is a reduction in cost, but certainly a reduction in the number of bollards, but in, in the essence of maintaining and keeping our students safe. And I think that's the key element to all of this, being able to go back and reevaluate what we did. Would you like that, anything else to that, Dr. Sergini? Okay.
I just have a quick question. In reference to canceling with KCBA, are there any, I guess it's just we're canceling and walking away? Or is there anything based on when we signed the contract?
So we, the contract was never signed. The, the following day, we made the determination that we were going to just put this on hold and figure out a better, a better plan forward after we reevaluated that. So there was no contract signed. In fact, we don't even have to have a number three on the agenda. We thought it was appropriate, though, for you to see that we are removing it as a result of our, our last decision, so that it would allow for this dialogue to occur if, if it was so necessary.
Ms. Cleary was clarifying something for me.
No, not at all. I was trying to give you the word. I think you were looking for penalties. Yeah.
So where?
There are no penalties.
That's, that's the word that I was looking for. So where, we have this on here as cancel construction to install, but we're saying that there's, we never entered into an agreement with them. So then is this action is obsolete? We don't?
We actually don't need to do this.
Okay, so.
The, the action item was actually removed.
So can we, okay, so it's removed?
And now it's back on somehow, but it doesn't need to happen.
All right, so can I request that that's removed?
It's, it's likely going to be removed after this evening. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Bricker on finance items? Ms. Perdue, you're still, you're still on the floor.
Yep, I just have one more. In reference to 9F for Keystone Realty, is that the same group that was doing the assessment appeals prior?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Austin?
Just more a point of curiosity on my part, and that is about, I guess it's about Act 511. And, and why are we, why are we the levying agency of, of amusement tax for townships? Just curious.
You got me. I have to look that one up. I have no idea why it's the district versus the townships.
Maybe for next week.
I guess because we get the revenue.
Okay, maybe, can we, just wondering, can we get a?
They can also set their own with regards to the other 511s, the townships.
We'll gather that information and provide it in the, in the memo for, for the board.
Thanks.
That's a good question. Sorry, we don't have the exact answer you need this evening.
It's okay.
Any other questions on matters under fiscal for Mr. Bricker to my left, to my right, seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Bricker. We'll move on to the, the rest of the agenda. We're looking at personnel items. Dr. Sergini?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Good evening. The personnel items for this month are as follows. One resignation professional, Janie Kelly, Special Education Instructor at Arcola. We thank Janie for her 14 years of dedicated service to the students of Mathacton, and we wish her well. One resignation classified, Krista Freiling, Marketing and Digital Media Specialist at Farina. We thank Krista for her dedicated service to Mathacton, and we wish her well. We have one job description, Facility Supervisor. This is an already approved position. We have two employment's professional, Lauren Banaka, Health and Physical Education Instructor at two of our elementary schools, and Mackenzie Detweiler, Music Orchestra Instructor at Arcola. Both of those are for the 2425 school year. We welcome Lauren and Mackenzie to Mathacton. We have one employment classified, Dana Del Conti, Secretary to the Principal at Woodland, effective May 28. We welcome Dana to Mathacton. We have two changes of status administrative, Christopher Kleingunther, from Assistant Director of Technology to Interim Director of Technology, effective June 13, 2024. We thank Chris for assuming this leadership position. And Derek Donardo, from HVAC Master Mechanic to Facility Supervisor, effective July 1. By way of background, Derek Donardo has served Mathacton School District as a HVAC Master Mechanic for the last 10 years. During that time, Derek assumed multiple leadership roles, including Teamster Shopsteward. Derek earned his Facilities Management Professional, or FMP, credential from Villanova University. Also of particular note, Derek is a 2004 graduate of Mathacton School District. So we thank Derek for taking on this administrative leadership role for his alma mater. We have one change of status classified, Colleen Wagner, from Secretary to the Assistant Principals at the high school, to Monitoring Assistant at Arcola, effective for the 2425 school year. Two uncompensated leaves classified, Gloria Rosado, PCA at Skyview, and Mary Schlenker, also PCA at Skyview, for the dates noted. And supplemental contracts for student services, support, support services, Film Festival Chaperones, coverage for the Supervisor of Special Education at the high school, extended school year staffing for the summer, Room Movements, IEP Writing, and Case Management. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Any questions for Dr. Sergini to my left? Ms. Perdue?
I just have for 10H1, in reference to the Director of Technology, the interim position stays until further notice. Did we already post for that position currently, or is it, like, what is the timeline for that?
We have not yet posted for this. This allows us to have continuity of leadership as Mr. Branick is leaving the district in June. That will then allow us to reassess our, our situation at that point and to make it a determination about moving forward.
Okay, and maybe I'll follow up in, once this take place, because I'm trying to understand what we mean by reassess our position and figure out, so.
So what we were going to be doing is we're going to be reevaluating the structure of the technology department, and we would like to be able to make a recommendation to the board before we proceed forward with just unanimously moving forward with the signing or advertising for the position.
Okay, so when should we hear, to hear about that?
We're targeting July.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Deal?
Real quick question. For 10J, does that Secretary of Assistant Principal at the high school need to be filled? So, yeah.
Sorry, it does, and we've already filled that position, so that will be coming forward as well.
Great, thanks.
Ms. Austin?
I just want to say that I'm just glad to see this for Derek Donardo. I've had occasion to interact with him on many occasions, and I've just been impressed. And I'm just glad we were able to offer him the advancement in keeping with his certification that he's recently received.
Thank you for those comments. Ms. Kent Crowe?
Sorry, can I, are you able to share with 10A the resignation of Jane Kelly after being with 14 years or no?
No, I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
Questions to my right, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, Ms. Austin stole my thunder. I know that Mr. Donardo, through the, through the negotiations for the Teamsters, has been very respectful for the process and an asset to the district. So that, I'm glad to see that. But can, we have a little bit of an explanation on 10N, 3 and 4. It looks like, I, I believe, the Supervisor of Special Ed is going on maternity leave, I believe, or on some type of leave. But then we, we seem to be splitting the position for, in the middle of the summer.
We are. Those are two individuals who have their administrative certifications. They are not both available at the same time, so we are splitting the time in the position.
Thank you.
Other questions to my right? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I just had one question, and you may not know the answer to this, so I'm just going to preface it with that. Do we offer supplemental contracts to teachers who are going to or have an interest in writing grants for grants?
Not specifically for grant writing.
Okay.
Unless, unless we are asking them to help us with writing a grant, if it's, if it's what we decide.
I just, I guess I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity here to sort of encourage teachers to look for grants, identify potential grants under a supplemental contract, spend the time it takes, which is significant, to go ahead and write for those grants to either enhance their, you know, the opportunities that we have and offer our students. Just something to think about. We don't, we can just sort of put that in our back pocket, but I just thought maybe we should be thinking about, we're looking at grants for a lot of other things now. So I think it might be an opportunity.
Thank you. Any other comments to my, from my right? Thank you, Dr. Sergini. Next, we have Curriculum and Program. Dr. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Couple items, we have three specifically in, in the Curriculum and Programs. The first one is new curriculum. We did see this last month. This is under English for Media Literacy, grades nine through 12. This is new curriculum. Last month, we discussed this because it had to sit for 28 days at the district office. It has sat for the required 28 days, and there was no request of revisions or concerns at all from the public. So this will now be ready to vote at the voting meeting next week. For 11B, it is a revised curriculum. Different from new curriculum, we do not need to hold this for the 28 days. It doesn't need to be reviewed because we are revising existing curriculum. Under Music and Art, you see the number of areas that required revision, and then naturally, Library, Health for grades three to six and 10, and then Physical Education. And those are all revised, and I believe in the folder for the, for the board's viewing. 11C, Federal Programs, this is to approve the participation with the Mathacton School District in the following program areas. So last year was about 280,000, I believe roughly, and the title Programming. And for those that don't know what the titles are, Title 1A is really where the, the most of that money goes. That's to provide financial assistance to local agencies for reading and mathematics. 2A is specifically Training Professional Development for our staff. 3 is typically used to improve educational opportunities for limited English proficiency, proficiency students. And 4 is used often here for supporting our safety and health students and also effective use of technology. We've also utilized this for support in the AP exams, as an example. And these numbers are typically derived from our free and reduced lunch numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Regina. Questions and members to my right? Mr. Winters?
Sorry, I didn't think about this before. I see this on 11A, the curriculum, the Media Literacy class in nine to 12. Can you explain why it is under English? I believe it was a social studies teacher that brought this forward. Is this to provide, is it, is there definitions of what, where it ends up? Or is it also to allow people to take it more as an elective? Yeah, it fits under the English curriculum. I know it was presented initially from a social studies teacher. It also allows us to provide English credit for this course as well, so. But that is, the required information within that course fits more under the English than social studies. Good question.
Any other questions to my right, to my left, seeing none? Thank you, Dr. Regina. And we move on to matters of policy. Dr. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. For our first read, we have a number of items for, for our first review. Those of specific note, item 530, what we are doing is removing the five hours per day language for the overtime, which is typically based on 40 hours per week by law and by CBA. So there's no need to have the eight hours per day language. For 606 Tax Collection, remove the per capita tax language. For 12C, we have 350 criminal charges or convictions. We are offering the notice of intent to repeal this. And the reason we're doing that is the policy is no longer supported by PSBA. And the accurate information contained in that policy is already found in Policy 317, which is Code Conduct and Disciplinary Procedures, and Policy 818.1, which is Contracted Service Personnel. The remainder stuff in this policy is outdated and needs to be removed, and that's my update for policy.
Thank you, Dr. Regina. Any comments or questions for Dr. Regina? Ms. Cleary?
Yeah, just wanted to make the board aware of a couple of things that we talked about in policy and that you'll see on the Policy Committee agenda. The first is, when you take a look at our policies, we have, there's a header, there's a heading, and there's a number of, of dates. And one of the things that we've noticed is there's some inconsistency between various policies on, on the different headings that we use. So we had our counsel, Mr. Summers, contact PSBA and find out, you know, what's the recommended practice. And so what we learned, or what he learned and shared with policy, was that last revised date, which simply means the date, which simply means the, the date that it was revised prior to the last revised date, which is crazy. And some of our policies had it and some of them didn't, and it's, it's not required. It's not even recommended necessarily by PSBA. So I just want everyone to know that we're taking that out. We're not going to use that anymore, and we'll update the policies so that it's all very uniform, and it makes me feel really good for that consistency. And then, the second issue is that Mr. Summers also advised us that the policies that we do not change do not have to be voted on. So when, when those come to the Policy Committee and we look at them and we say, you know, there's no changes required, nothing, you're not going to see them anymore for vote. We have been voting on those previously, and we won't be doing that going forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cleary, for that clarification. Any other comments on policy to my right, to my left? Ms. Perdue?
I just have a question. So if, and I know sometimes we make minor changes, which is like, we add a comma or space, are those going to come to the board to vote on still?
Yes, any, to Ms. Cleary's point, the only change that would actually happen on the document when you don't vote on it is we would just be changing the last reviewed date, just so you, members of the board and members of the public know that we have reviewed it as a committee. But if there's no revisions, the revision date won't change, and there will be no formatting, no pronoun changes, nothing will exist. If there is one edit to the document, it will come to the board for vote.
And I just have a follow-up question. In reference to the Notice of Intent to repeal, what's the procedure for that?
Good question. You will see this again next month. It just won't have notice on it. It'll say intent to repeal. At that point, the board would vote on that, and we would then repeal it after that vote.
So is it for, you, this is an advertisement for NLC? Perfect, thank you.
Very similar to the first read, yep.
Thank, any other comments on matters of policy? Seeing none, we move on to items under 13, Other. We have Transportation. You'll see that there are five individuals listed to be approved as drivers under the transportation roster for the 23-24 school year. The Benefit and Compensation Plans, both the Act 93 Benefit and Compensation Plan from July 1, 24, to June 30, 27, as per attached, and also approve the Confidential and Exempt Employee Benefit and Compensation Plan for July 1, 24, through June 30, 28, as attached. The PSBA Delegate Assembly Appointments, if you recall, based on the class designation of our district, we have, can send three delegates. That means members of the board can participate in the PSBA Delegate Assembly scheduled for November 2, 2024, in person or virtually. So all we would ask that is for next week, we have three names, or three individuals, up to three individuals, that we don't need to send three, but up to three individuals that will participate in that. Under 13F, we have School Safety, approved Cardinal Point Security Group to conduct the 2024 Behavioral Risk Assessment and Vulnerability Report for the Methacton School District at cost of $8,400, and approved Zero Eyes Artificial Intelligence to be installed on existing security infrastructure with a five-year contract for $75,000 per year. We also have the requirement to approve on an annual basis the School Board Treasurer, so approve the election of Danielle Penza to serve as a treasurer to the Board of School Directors for a term of one year beginning July 1, 24, through June 30, 25. Any questions on matters of Other for the board? To my right, seeing none. To my left? I'm coming back to my right, no? Ms. Graff?
Yeah, I just wanted to note, and I know that Dr. Sergini can fill it in, on the 13F, the Zero Eyes approval, there is a grant associated with that? Could you just clarify that for us, please?
That's correct, Ms. Graff. We have secured a $45,000 grant for year one of the contract through the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency.
Thank you.
Any other comments on matters of Other? Seeing none, thank you. That moves us into dates for board members' calendars. I'll turn the meeting over to Madam President.
Okay, we have the dates, and just, I just wanted to note that we are going to have, next week, we'll have our usual meeting, and then we go into June with a work session and a regular board meeting. And then, I just wanted to, to just see if we could provide information about the committee meetings. Do you have that with you, or should you do it next week?
We can certainly update everyone next week, but please note that it has been determined that committee meetings will be adjusted. Those that have been on the original calendar will be adjusted or canceled. And there's also an additional request for finance to add a meeting in August, if it all possible. So we'll be making those advertisements and those notices made on the doors of our buildings as well as on our website, and where posting is required, and in the newspaper will do the same.
Thank you. We have old business and then new business, and then we're going to move to courtesy of the floor. The Board of School Directors will now provide an opportunity for residents to make comments on matters that are, or maybe before the board. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments. You could also submit your questions via email, information@methacton.org.
Jim Malik-Worseth, just to give you some perspective about your $134 million budget, do you know how many F-14s you can buy with 134 million bucks? About five. We're talking military, a tenth of a billion dollars you want to spend. And you know, it's easy for some of you folks up there to sit there and say, ah, 4.7% no big deal, because you're not paying your fair share. Do the math. $29,000 per student per year, if you've got kids, multiply it by one, two, three, four, and then see how much you're paying in property taxes or school taxes. Nobody up here is even coming close to 29K. So if you were paying 29K, you wouldn't be sitting here going, yeah, 4%, great, let's do it. Tim, you missed a slide in your presentation. Where's the slide about the efforts made to decrease the tax increase? Where, where, I didn't see the slide. Matter of fact, I went to the Finance Committee. I didn't see the effort. All these questions up front, everybody's asking questions about these little things, but not one person up front goes, hey, how can we get that tax increase down? Not one, not this meeting, not the prior meeting, nobody up front. But all these ridiculous little questions about, you talk about $134 million is going to impact senior citizens and everybody else, you guys don't care. It's the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen. Paul, how much, since you're the head of the Finance Committee, how much are you budgeting in this budget for the Capital Reserve Fund? Cut it. I heard 1.2 to 1.5 million. You cut that and you're down below 4%. You should be the guy sitting up front saying, hey, 1.5 million for Capital Reserve? No good. I don't hear, I don't hear a word. I don't hear a word, doesn't make sense. I got a question for you, Dave. Are we editing our videos? Are you guys editing and taking stuff out of the meeting videos that you don't like? Can you tell me that one? Because I got an email here, let me read it for you. This one's from Ms. Drummond to you back in '22. Just to let you know, the first approximate 12 minutes of the board meeting posted on YouTube has audio, no video for that period of time from before the meeting started, but you can hear people talking. I believe we should edit it to include meeting only. Are you cutting stuff out of video? Can you tell me that one? I think, I think you are. So maybe you can explain that.
John Andrews, Law, Providence. I got to the meeting late, and thank you for saving a seat for me. Few comments relative to items to be voted on next year, next week. With regard to 9G, Insurance Carriers. A few years ago, there'd be six or eight or 10 different insurance policies, each of them individually priced, and, and showing the low bidder for each. Now we've got one bidder, and I'd like to know, is that because you want each bidder to bid on everything? Or, or why the change? And, you know, maybe auto insurance, there'd be lots of competition because there are lots of different auto insurance companies. With regard to 9H, the earned income tax of a half a percent, seems like every year it's a half a percent. Can that, is there something in the law that allows for adjustment of that? With regard to 9I, the homestead exclusion, in the amount of $360.06, is that per home? And I think I heard Mr. Brickler say there are 3,800 homes getting that amount. And if there's, let's say there were twice as many homes, would it still be 360, or would it be 180? I'm not sure how that act, how that is set up. With regard to 10A, the approving a resignation of a special ed instructor a month before the end of school. And I speculate that those students are really suffering for that month. And why is it that the resignation is allowed a month before the end of school? And with regard to Zero Eyes, 75,600.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I'd like to finish one sentence. That's 126 cameras. Also, according to the Zero Eyes.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
According to the Zero Eyes website, the first time they, they observe a weapon, there's an extra $100,000 charge plus labor, as I understand it. So it's an open-ended contract, presumably, and, you know, 126 cameras. Do we need to watch them at 2 o'clock in the morning? Thank you.
Ryan Ershell, Law, Providence. The budget process at Methacton remains broken and ineffective. School district's operations are supposed to break even. For the last seven consecutive years, the district has posted multimillion-dollar budget surpluses. Over the past five years, 15.5 million in surpluses, 22.3 million over the last 10. None of the surplus returned to taxpayers. No changes have been made in how the administration develops the budget, so the broken process continues. I spent two years at a board, and I tried to improve the budget process, including introducing a forecast for the current fiscal year, a basis for any budget. That process seems to have been abandoned. Nobody can tell me what the budget surplus is for the current year. In tonight's presentation, it was good to see that a change I recommended at the last meeting was, was actually made. The Zerby Budget Slush Fund, also known as the Budgetary Reserve, has been removed. There's many more changes you can make. You've not challenged this budget, even tonight. The board seems content in rubber stamping what the board, what the administration has recommended. This was ever, even more important this year with a business manager on his way out the door. No challenges have been made. The budget is going up 6%, 4.75% of a tax increase being funded by taxpayers. There is room for improvement. Budget Additional Interest Income. Year-to-date, the district has recognized 2.1 million in interest income, annualized as 2.5 million. Next year's budget, 1.9. You've got 600,000 sitting right on the table, that you put into the budget and reduce the tax increase. 1.65 million is budgeted to be transferred to the Capital Reserve. You've already got $16 million in the Capital Reserve. You're budgeting another 10 million out of borrowing for capital projects. Why do you need to move, put another 1.6 million? You've done no capital forecast. You've done no forecast of what the capital needs are. This is an unnecessary expenditure. Take it out of the budget. Legal expenses increasing $200,000. Challenge the administration to control expenses. Take out that increase. Budget for the sale of Autobot Elementary. That property's been sitting vacant for years. This sale would provide additional funds for capital projects and eliminate about $200,000 in annual maintenance costs. The digital and, digital media and marketing specialist is now a vacant position. Take it out of the budget. What are you marketing? Your marketing is clearly not working, whatever you're doing, because your charter, school costs are going up. Why are kids leaving the district? And again, you haven't challenged the effectiveness of all the programs in the district. Overall, you've made no interest, no, there's been no interest and no effort to reduce the amount of the tax increase, which is slated to be the highest in the last decade. Show that you care about taxpayers. Make some of these changes I recommended. You've got another week. Delay the vote if you have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? With that, do I have a motion to?
From members of the board?
Yeah, from members of the board. I apologize.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment. I want to speak to the, the accusation of editing the board video. So certainly, I remembered that email exactly, and it was at a time when there was a, an error by our videographers, and the, it is clear in policy that the video of the board meeting does not get edited, and it was not edited.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Winters?
We have a couple clarifying answers here. The amusement tax and the other local taxes, is it a requirement for us to approve those on a yearly basis?
Yes.
And the homestead exclusion, could you explain what that dollar amount represents and the, the number of participants?
So there is a large calculation that PDE provides where you put in the individual homes that are qualified for the Homestead and Farmstead Act. Through that calculation, which is a large spreadsheet, it comes up with the homestead and farmstead exception. It's not based on a number, but the values that come out and the tax rate and millage that we're putting in.
Actually, my notes aren't good on the next one, so I apologize, Mr. Andrews. There was a question about Zero Eyes. I believe the comment was, if we identify a weapon, there's an additional charge. I guess there's a concern that we're spending money identifying the weapon, or can you explain that a little bit?
We are not going to explain the, the matter in a public meeting.
Thank you. I would disagree with some of the other comments related to the opinions of the process on, on the, but doesn't really matter. In the interest of interest expense, can you identify how that process is what would go, and also, is the, the base amount of that interest lower in this coming year than it was this past year?
So what we do is we take a forecast on the interest rates. We take a forecast on our anticipated balances throughout the month, which then calculates out the interest income. Currently, our budget for this year is above what we budgeted, budget for next year is above what we budgeted for this year, which. above what we budgeted for this year, which assumes that interest rates will increase, will stay flat for a while and then decrease as we get closer to November, and then flatten out a little.
Okay. Um, there was also a, a comment related to the Capital Reserve. I believe we were clear about that the last couple of years, to be getting to the point of not having to borrow. I understand we do have a Capital Reserve balance, but it to be part of the normal run rate related to capital concerns, is that correct?
That is correct, but I think, uh, more importance is, we do have a master facilities plan that, that projects out for the next 10 years what the investments in our facilities is required, and neither does the amount in the Capital Reserve project or the borrowing of $10 million even take a, a significant dent out of that, uh, 10-year plan.
Thank you. I think there was, uh, the, I, I don't know if this was it, there was also a comment about trying to keep employees from resigning before the end of the year. I don't think that is, uh, and I think the only situation would be if that individual was going to another district. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that employee's actually been out the entire year, and there has been a long-term substitute teacher in for her.
Thank you.
With that, is there any other further comments or questions from the board? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Alston, can I have a second? Ms. Pooja? Motion adjourned.
I do the, I do the same thing.